Because we do have, we have like the women's stretching area, the stretching area, the hit zone, the spin room. Now we're trying to put that all up.
What percentage of Morton Grove residents currently use the pool?
Uh, we have approximately, we have approximately four thousand members, four thousand members of twenty-four, twenty-three thousand communities. Now that could include non-residents. So, but, yeah. I'm sorry, hang on, let me say it was first.
Why did you, um, why did you use Waukegan as a projection community? There's ninety thousand residents in Waukegan versus fifty thousand in Glenview. I think that like last one where you were talking about them having a comparable field house for twenty-eight million. I mean, that's such a big...
Yeah, I would say, I would say that, yeah, populationism is the only thing that you're kind of looking at. So if you're looking at the two different communities, I think we're more in line with Waukegan than we are with Glenview. Glenview being a very affluent community, not very diverse. Uh, Waukegan, uh, just the opposite.
Plus we look at their budget numbers for the cost of the facility and the maintenance. So it's about the same.
But isn't it a numbers game ultimately? Like how you make money is that there's ninety thousand people, so you have a bigger pool of people who pay?
Well, that's a factor, but again, we looked at the numbers of what it costs them to be paying in, in, on the facility, which would change a whole lot.
Yeah, I would say Waukegan is probably, again, uh, probably a better one because if you look at Waukegan, you see the competition that they're up against. Uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of private providers in Waukegan. Planet Fitness, twenty-four-seven, just, they're all everywhere. Hey, I'm sorry. Here, I'll get you back to your question.
Yeah, my question, uh, I mean, one of the one players is a hundred thousand dollars lost in the state of Charlotte. We have to realize that a pool, no pool makes money. I mean, it's not designed to make money because, you know, it's a park district. We're not even here as a business.
Right.
So, um, so I think some of those losses are acceptable if enough people are using it.
Sure.
However, when you go to option B and you end up moving a lot of things around, you know, you're like shuffling your deck chairs. I'm gonna set this stuff over there, some of it over here. I mean, I, I think realistically speaking, option three is gonna be thirty-five million dollars provided down here.
Seriously, yeah, they do, they put, they do put some contingencies in there just for inflation, but I understand what you're saying.
Because I worked with public building before, building in my career, and I have yet to see any public building come in under Waukegan.
They don't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, so, so, I agree. So what I would say is like, look, we're gonna get into, we're gonna get in, we're gonna get into funding. So if we found out that through the bidding process that we don't, we exceed that by a lot, we have to do some serious discussions. We don't have, and we'll talk about this later, we don't have funds to absorb an overage. Okay, yeah.
The four thousand members you were just speaking of, how, how recent was that count? Well, a pool that has not been functional in a couple of years at least.
We were talking about the fitness center.
Oh, fitness center? I thought you had the pool.
No. No, because what you'll see this year, uh, we didn't do a whole lot of memberships because it was cold, wet spring. Everybody said, forget it. If I buy a membership, I'm gonna waste my money. I'll just do dailies. So our dailies expanded exponentially from the previous year. The year before that, we saw a lot of membership because we had a really nice spring and we went down under dailies. Yeah.
Hey, Jeff, do you keep a record of how many attendance we have at the pool?
Yes.
Either people pay, uh, for the park district or they come in, would you? Are those numbers, have those numbers, I assume, have gone down over the last five years?
So, yeah, it, it depends on the, on the summer. Right? So hot summers, we're gonna see a little bit more. So what, what we've done with park is, uh, we had a lot of water loss at, at one point. At one point, it was losing about thirty-three thousand gallons a day. Uh, so people didn't want to go swim there because it was too cold. So we shrunk the operational hours and the season of it. So we opened it second, shut it down first to kind of mitigate the expense that we would see in it. So if we had a really rain, we had a forecast day, we would shut down hard, keep Oriole open just as, as way to help offset the loss. I'm sorry.
Quick question. In the indoor example, what if you did something oriented toward children instead of doing warm water there?
Uh, we, we could, but it's gonna expand the footprint. This was just, again, I wanna stress, this was just what it possibly could look like. What we would do when, when a decision is made, then we would have to go back to the art and say, okay, this is what we want. Once we have a really good, solid, uh, diagrams, we would come back out to the public, say, this is what we do, get their input, make those changes, possibly come back out to the community again and say, one more time, this is your, this is our pool. When I say ours, this is the community's pool. And you should have input as to what that ultimately looks like. Yeah.
Not really a question, but just more of a suggestion. Uh, as far as the buildings and the designs, suggesting pushing it further towards, further south because of the softball field, because they are knocking those balls and it pulls them out, and they're just gonna keep getting bigger and stronger. So moving it back for just a little.
Yeah, so, so field number, field number two shouldn't be a twelve-inch field, but that's the only, the only limit. So ideally, what you would do is you move, uh, the twelve inch over to five. Uh, the trees that are out there right now, you know, they're scrubbed. They could, you know, they're really not a, a loss. We could also replant something in its place somewhere else to offset that, and that would be your twelve-inch field.
Yeah, the only suggestion is, Lord, you've got one shot at this.
Yeah.
You know, once you think you've got it, stop, rethink it again until you, you know, finally come up with it. Don't jump it, don't push it, make the correct decision. That's all I suggest.
I have a question on the physical construction of a building. There's been such a significant change with solar. If the roofs were done in that for our hours of sunlight we get here, might that help offset a little bit as far as electrical costs, things like that, in the actual building? Would it be worthwhile to go into something like that?
It would offset the, the, the long-term costs, but the initial cost would increase. So to be able to put in solar, you would have, you know, that's something that we could ask about, but that would increase any of these top-end, more, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'm gonna work my way back down this.
I'm just wondering, has the board or the city looked into the possibility, uh, I know it's been done at the federal level, of grants toward green energy, replaceable energy, to see if you could actually drum up some money to put in a solar array or something like that?
Yeah, I, um, we, we haven't, um, uh, but we, we have been approached by vendors to use the building. So that is something that we could, could look at, yeah.
You could, now, I'm not working, I'm retired now, but you could maybe contact some people at the General Services Administration. They've done things like that, where the vendors come in, approve their product.
Yeah.
And there's a, um, like a saving, savings, a trade-off.
Yeah.
And it's sometimes, um, they'll do the, they will install it for you, but you have to look into how that could be done. I, I'm not sure, but I know, I know that agency has done that.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, solar idea is a good idea. However, I don't think it would work well with retractable roof. It would be too expensive to do.
Physically, if we're talking about option three, that makes sense for option, you know, the other two options. That might be a little difficult. Yeah, yeah.
So, so are, are the people at Morton Grove gonna vote on those options? Or do you vote on those options? I'm confused about what happens next.
So that's what tonight was about. That's what the town halls were all about. This was for you, for us to say, here's what we have. You tell us what you like, you tell us what you don't like. And then, yes, the board, as your elected representatives, they make the decision. Now, if you don't like that decision, you can, uh, there's ways for you to exercise your constitutional right to vote. Right? Because we'll get into why, what that means. Anybody else? So I'm going back to this end?
My turn. I know you all know how I feel, so, you can ignore me. But, okay, option three, I think, I'm sorry, for our community, I think is ridiculous. Um, with the initiative we have here, I think it's a waste of our community. You cannot Planet Fitness, it takes a month. I mean, you cannot compete with that. You want lifetime, you want all the, you know, the clubs and the indoor pool and the classes and all that. That's like a mile away. I mean, I don't think it would do well in this community. I don't think it would get any money back. That's my opinion.
I agree.
You want an indoor walking track, you go to Golf View or Culpo. It's free. You don't have to live in miles. My parents walk there all the time. You know, I, I think that's another waste. Sorry. Um, and there's nothing for our kids to do. So now you're taking away this recreational area for our children this summer. And you know what? Our kids nowadays, and today's day, they need to be kids. And they need to go out this summer, and they need to go swimming, and they need to have a childhood that we all have. So that's my opinion. I think number three. Anything but three.
Okay, so, um, let me, let's briefly talk about, um, some, hang on, this is probably, all right. So, uh, we are separate from the village. Uh, and, you know, some people don't realize that we're, we're a special district, just like the school. So, uh, we are, uh, not home rule, which the, the village is. We are supported by property taxes and the fees that we charge for our programs and services. So, uh, we are bound by tax cap legislation that we can only increase our, our budget or your property taxes by the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which has been roughly about two percent every year. Okay? Uh, so we have limited resources to fund this project. And we'll talk, uh, the big reason for those limited resources is that every year we have the ability to extend debt. That debt, uh, right now is about, let's call it a million dollars. Of that million dollars, uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand is for the bond and interest payment over at Oriole. So that leaves us with a little bit of money to fund capital projects. We need a new mower. We need a new van to transport kids. We need, uh, things to maintain this building. A boiler, we got a twenty-five thousand dollar boiler replacement, high-water heater, uh, for this building. Uh, we, oh, so, uh, all the, we recently did a study, uh, the engineering study, on all the courts, tennis courts, basketball courts within the district, and we have about, uh, nine-hundred thousand dollars in repair needs just for the courts. Uh, most of that is taken up by these courts out here. So, we are, uh, let's talk about this. So how do we get in it? So rising operational costs to revenue. So we've got healthcare, healthcare costs going up five percent. Uh, uh, sorry, uh, insurance going up. We have payroll going up. We have all these things sort of kind of going up, and it's all relying on property values. We have a housing bubble. Your property values came down. What we're able to get back into, uh, the park district, dropped as well. So of your property, it should be probably a good time to say that currently the, uh, the tax that the park district has on your estimated assessed valuation is four-point-four percent. Okay, so for every hundred dollars, we get four-point-four cents. So what have we, what have we done, uh, in the last couple of years? Well, we're almost three staff members short in the Parks Department. We rely all on seasonal employees. Uh, these are typically, typically coming from, uh, you know, college students or a service of manpower. So they're unskilled, but they do a great job for us. We reduced the recreation staff by one, just shifted those responsibilities to the others. We have a limited two positions, two full-time positions at the museum. And thanks to a, uh, great relationship that we have with the Historical Society, they're doing a lot more of what those positions do. Now we have like, uh, a part-time, two part-time people that are answering the phones and doing, you know, copies and things like that. We've really placed the park police with park patrol. So we no longer have armed officers patrolling the parks. The good news is that those officers are, are still with us in the park patrol. So we were able to, uh, reduce our liability because they're no longer armed, and we don't have to pay them, uh, that, that rate because they are, have to maintain their, their trainings and things like that. We reduced the registration desk service hours. So we were open on, uh, late on Saturday afternoon, all day Sunday, but nobody's coming in. So why are we open when nobody wants to register for the classes on Sunday afternoon? Uh, additionally, a lot of people are now using an online option, so it just makes sense to do that. Uh, we do a lot of in-house versus, uh, going to, uh, vendors, uh, for repairs. We have a talented group in the Parks Department. They can do just about anything that we ask of them. And if they, we can't do it, then, uh, you know, that's a rare case, but, you know, based on their time, we may have to use them. Uh, and we have, uh, intergovernmental agreements. So we have an intergovernmental agreement with District Seventy, Sixty-Seven, the Historical Society, and the Village. The Village is an important one for us. We have, it's called a shared use. So they will, uh, basically, if like, uh, if we had a water main break, they'll come out, they'll fix it for us. They'll just ask for us to pay the cost of the supplies. We had some drainage done over at Vanceville. They did just ask for the supplies. Uh, we, anytime that we need a piece of equipment and it's available, we'll, we'll swap it back to the board. So that's a great opportunity for us to do that. So it's been great. Any questions so far? Okay. Okay, so the only way for us to, uh, do a, a project is to go out a referendum. A referendum is a voter initiative. We, uh, put to the county a question, and that question, uh, goes to, should, uh, the Morton Grove Park District do blank? And you get to decide upon it. So there's two things that we can do. We can ask for, uh, the issuance of bonds, whatever that dollar amount may be. Let's just use hypothetically ten million dollars. Should the Morton Grove Park District issue ten million dollars in bond, capital replacement bonds for Har-Park redevelopment project? Or we could ask for rate increases. As I said, your rating, rate right now is four-point-four percent. So we could possibly just raise our rate, um, to, uh, pay for those bonds. So when we do this, for the bonds, you can only use the bonds for its intended purposes. Okay? If you're gonna do some construction, that's what it's for. Funds, uh, here, we'll purchase the bonds and then help offset some maintenance costs if we so choose to put that on there for consideration. Uh, the increase in your property tax will be eliminated once the bonds are paid off. Typically, it's about twenty years. Uh, with a referendum, a rate increase, it, it stays the same. Uh, once it, once it increases, it's, it, that's the, that's the level at which we, um, receive funds. So few, future projects would require another referendum. Okay? Right now, Oriole Pool does not get paid off until 2032. Now, at that point, it'll be twenty years old. So twenty years old, we're probably gonna need new pumps, new, maybe a miner, uh, you know, all kinds of different things that could possibly be maybe, so it's, it's balance. Uh, this, once the bonds are paid off, the funds that are, are available could be used for future projects or portions of a future project. Any questions? Yeah?
How does our rate compare to other communities that are comparable to Morton Grove?
Uh, we are, it, well, it, it's really difficult to compare apples to apples when you're talking about the surrounding communities because we're, besides, uh, Gulf Main, you look at the Nasser Partner Agencies, uh, we're the second smallest. Uh, we don't have the tax base that a lot of other, uh, communities have. So we're, uh, we're a little bit lower than some of the others, but, uh, you know, for the average statewide, we're, we're below. Yeah.
Hundred dollars and cents for, so, I'm scared, you know?
I know, I know.
The schools are ninety percent of my tax, but this is peanuts.
Yeah, so we'll get, we'll get into that. Does anybody else have any questions about this? Okay. Don't, don't freak out. Okay, here's your tax implications. Okay, so we, we, here's the projects. Okay, we took the high cost. Okay? So eleven thirteen, nineteen thirty-two million. So, a tax increase on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar value home. Why did we choose two-hundred-thousand dollars? Because that's what we're required to put it in terms when it goes on the ballot. So if you have a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you just double it. Okay? If you have a hundred-thousand-dollar home, just cut it in half. So your property tax for, uh, option one would go up fifty-seven dollars a year. Sixty-seven thirty-six for option two A, ninety-eight forty-five for option two B, and a hundred and sixty-five eighty-two for option three. So what does that mean? Is a rate increase? So from four-point-four, you're gonna go up one-point-one percent for option one, one-point-three for option two A, one-point-eight for option two B, and two-point-nine for option three. So what if we said, hey, you know, what if we tried to offset that operational loss with a, a little bit more increase in the, uh, rate? So we would need to cover the operational loss on option one. We would need an additional fifteen twenty-six a year, thirty fifty-two for option eight, forty-five seventy-eight for option two B. And you actually see a little decrease here because we said that we've been possibly breaking. Okay? So what is that additional percentage increase? Two-tenths, five-tenths, seven-tenths, minus one tenth. Okay, that's what you're gonna see. Hold on, just a moment. So your total levy for the rate increase plus the, the maintenance is five-point-seven for a total of seventy-two twenty-six for a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home per year. Six-point-two or ninety-seven eighty-eight, six-point-nine one forty-four twenty-three, seven-point-two one sixty-two thirty per year. Give you a moment to absorb that. So you had a question?
No, we answered it as you responded.
Okay. So, I mean, if you have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you're, you're rempling six dollars a month.
This is for the tax, I mean, not for a bond.
So if, so this right here, this is, uh, for a bond or a rate. That costs the same amount of money for the bond or the rate per household, two-hundred-thousand dollars you can get. So if we, this only, this is where you get into, uh, just the rate increase. Yeah.
So, so the, the tax increase for two-hundred-thousand value is the, is the bottom cost that you'd be paying, or that we'd be paying on tax as well?
Yeah, yeah.
So that figure would compare to the seventy-two-dollar figure in terms of the tax?
Yeah, this, this would, this would be for, uh, operational loss. So we could actually possibly use that money elsewhere, uh, because capital dollars are, are so at a premium. There's certain things that we have to prioritize, replacement. So right now, when we made the decision to do this, we had fourteen years to win Oriole would be paid off. We have fourteen parks with playgrounds. We decided that each playground would replace each year. Uh, so we do that. We set aside money for the fitness center, about forty thousand dollars, so that we can replace the equipment and other, uh, items because that, if you start, uh, going cheap on that, they're gonna go someplace else. Hey, they got a better product over at LA Fitness. I'm gonna go there. So we wanna keep things moving, uh, changing around in there.
I'm just, I'm just comparing the two, for the bonds versus the, uh...
Yeah, uh, no different, uh, your cost, uh, to, to purchase the bonds. When you talk about doing the operational loss. So just to finish that, so if we did, uh, if it's something, uh, requires, uh, that will improve life safety, uh, we would, uh, replace that. And if a piece of equipment or something is costing more to repair than it would be to buy something new, we would fund, so not a lot of opportunities to do much of any of this. So, yeah.
What if, uh, and this is a possibility, what if you have another crash, a local crash with housing costs starting to... Then you would lose revenue, right?
Not if we kept it simple and just a number one.
Well, simple would, if, I'm not saying that it won't happen, but that, that could be.
If we have another crash, uh, in which housing values go down, the money that we get from the community goes down. So, yes, then we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna be able to do to maintain the level of service that we are currently providing.
We're also collecting forward at the time also for fashion, kind of, which is, tends to be...
Well, yeah, it can, it can be spotty, but it's happened. It's happened, but, yeah, it's just, it's just the thought, boy, to keep in mind, but you can't... You need to look to the future somehow.
Sure, yes. Anybody else?
Right, over.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Um, have you thought, or anyway, I guess I would encourage you to think about how you're gonna communicate this to the community because, like, people in this room have feelings about this and care.
Yeah.
But the people in this, I mean, there's a lot fewer people in this room than Morton Grove. I know you've had other meetings, but, um, I'm guessing several of you have been to more than one meeting. Probably, I'm looking at you now. But, um, I mean, I'm just thinking through, when I look at, uh, a referendum issue, I think about my pocketbook, and I don't think about what all of it means. So have you thought about like a communication campaign or a way to really help people care?
Yes, we have. So, uh, there's, the, the park district cannot go out and sell a referendum. So, uh, we can't tell people, go out and vote for option whatever. Uh, we can't do that. Uh, the board in their official capacity cannot, uh, say, go out and vote for option whatever. They can as private citizens, and they wouldn't say that, hey, as a private citizen or a resident of Morton Grove, this is how I feel. I'm not speaking on my official capacity as a board member. So, yeah, so if there is, uh, like, you know, people that wanna organize, push out, you know, uh, support for whatever plan is decided upon, great, that's wonderful. We do have a communication, uh, vendor that is developed, they're listening, they're, all the town hall meetings are recorded, audio. Uh, so they're kind of developing themes and insights and developing a communication plan for us. Right now, we're going through the, uh, budget process so that we can, for twenty-nine, twenty-twenty, excuse me. So, uh, increase in, uh, marketing materials to the community a couple of times, probably in, you know, a couple of January, one in February, one right before March. That states just the facts. This is what we're doing. This is why we're doing it.
I think this is what is compelling, right? It's showing like that it's a pretty increment, like, small incremental increase. And, like, I just wonder how much of this you can share with, I mean, I know that the option will be decided, right? I, I think there won't be multiple options.
Yeah, we would, whatever option, we would explain, this is, this is the impact on you, because that's fact. This is what it's gonna cost, and that's what we would, yeah, yeah.
So basically, the board does decide which option to go around, right?
Yes.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
Where is some deciding?
Yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely. So, yeah, the, uh, yeah, let me see the next slide. Okay, so we've already kind of talked about open, but this has been an open schedule. So really, the next steps are, are these. So, uh, the board, uh, based on their schedule, I'm not really sure where that is, probably be before the end of October. Certainly, I don't think we're gonna be able to make an, the, the October board yet, right? Two weeks from today? So they're gonna sit down, they're gonna talk about what option they want. They're gonna have to come up with some consensus as to which one to put forward. Uh, then we would then, staff would then go develop that question, write the question out, uh, and then submit that to the county before, uh, just shortly after, uh, the first of December. That goes on to the, the March twenty-twenty, uh, primary, presidential primary. Uh, they will be in the back of your, um, ballot, uh, the question, and you can devote yes or no. So let's just say hypothetically that, uh, whatever option is chosen, uh, it passes. Okay, whatever, you know, bond or rate, doesn't, doesn't really matter. What we're trying to do is, what are the next steps? And the next step is to engage an architect. I don't know if that's Williams. I don't know if that's another vendor or whatnot. I don't know if that's Williams, I don't know if that's another vendor or whatnot. There is some value in Williams and that they are familiar with the project, but that's, I think the board is kind of split on what they wanna do with that. If everything goes accordingly, Williams said that they could hit probably a late September groundbreaking, depending on the weather. I know that, how many people have heard that we're gonna have polar coasters this winter? Polar vortex, up and down, up and down, really extreme weather. So, if we have mild winter, you know, in 2021, it would probably open on time or slightly into June. So, what happens if a referendum fails? Well, we have to go back to the draw, kind of figure out what happened, why it didn't get approval. What, that could be a survey, it could be just more town halls, I don't know what that would look like, but that is an option. So, if it doesn't, oh, I'm sorry, I should have said this at the beginning. This was the last summer for Har Pool, it will not open in 2020. We pushed it a little too much, you get 57 years on a pool is unheard of these days. So, yeah, it's just, it's just beyond the juice of life, and we just can't really rely on it anymore. So, yeah.
Do we need to pull in Morton Grove?
I, my personal opinion is, I don't think that Oriole can handle 96-degree day at all. I mean, if you go out there, so right now, what we're trying to do, the recreation staff, the recreation staff is working on a scheduled plan because now we're gonna take two pools, and we're gonna combine them into one, how are we gonna make this work? Pardon? Huh? No, 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 not a pool summer. Yeah, that is something that we have to look at because, you know, again, we've got swim lessons, we've got senior programming, we've got open swim, we've got camps, we've got, we've got the swim team. How are we gonna pack all this in? That's something that we're gonna have to figure out. So, yeah.
Has there been a change for 2020 in what the pool has, the pool costs, like, 55? Since you're paying.
Not something that we discussed, but probably not, yeah.
And then also the custom summer camp next year, some of the kids.
So, yeah, as for summer camp, what we're trying to do, I know it's not ideal, but we're trying to shift some of the younger kids to the west side. So, we've talked to Melzer, Melzer, this is the first year in like two years that they were gonna allow us back into the school because they've been doing construction and things like that, so we're gonna be able to use Melzer. So, the junior camp will go over there, maybe Morgan can go over there. It's possible to use for the teen time, to use National because they're a little bit older.